Welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I am Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trumbull, Acting Director of Planning, and the planners assigned to tonight's petitions. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in May. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be moved forward to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present their request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor, in opposition, or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, opposition, or with concern. This is not a vote, it's not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC 14-22 Qua Pau Whispering Pines LLC.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, it's PC 14-22 Qua Pau Whispering Pines LLC, which is a request for an amended C8 for a 0.59 acre tract of land located on the north side of Olive Boulevard, approximately 200 feet west of Whispering Pines Drive. As you can see from the county context map, this parcel is located in mid-county. And the parcel is outlined in red on the aerial. It's sort of in one of the middle parcels as part of this larger retail development. You can see in the land use map some of the surrounding context. And to the south, across Olive Boulevard, and also to the east, on the north side of Olive is the municipal limits for the city of Creve Court. And then to the west of the subject site is largely office and retail. And then there is multifamily residences to the northeast. And you can see from this aerial, it's a little bit of a closer view. You could see the specific parcel within this larger retail development. And that is the subject of tonight's petition.
Okay, that it?
I was going to show you some photos. So this view is looking northeast from Olive Boulevard. You can see the public hearing sign. And then this view would just be turning around, looking southwest across Olive Boulevard. And that's a large sort of retail commercial center anchored by a Schnucks grocery store. And then this view would be looking west. You can see the existing signs on site. And then this view would be looking west along Olive Boulevard. And then this is looking northwest along Cram. That's the youth bridge site adjoining the subject site. And then this view would be looking north into the site. You can see the existing development, the sort of middle building, sort of the empty retail space where next to Michael's Flooring is the petition site. And this view would be looking southeast towards the Walgreens. And then this view is northeast. And actually, Ms. Buck, it's this entire building is part of the petition site. There's only one tenant space available, though. And this view would be looking north. This is at the rear of the site. And then this view is looking northeast. And then turn around and looking south at the back of the existing structure. And then this view would be looking southeast across Whispering Pines Drive. And then this view is looking south towards Olive Boulevard. On the south side, you can see it in the distance is the BJC West County Hospital. And the petitioner has a presentation at this time.
All right, thanks, Paul. Petitioner?
So Rusty, I'm making you the presenter. So you'll have to click Share down by your mute button and then click PowerPoint.
Am I sharing my screen or am I sharing your screen?
You'll be sharing your screen. Do you have the PowerPoint open?
I do.
Yeah, so click Share and then you would, yeah, it's coming up now. And then just take it full screen. We can see it.
familiar with this one. Can you help me how I bring this up now?
We can see the presentation, you just need to start it.
Oh, okay. So can you see the screen?
Yeah, this is big enough.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Honorable Planning Commission members, as well as planning staff and those that are watching. And my name is Rusty Saunders. I'm landscape architect, land planner at Loomis Associates at 750 Spirit 40 Park Drive out in Chesterfield. And I am here today representing Qua Pau Whispering Pines LLC, the owner of this property. Also on the call is Mr. Rod Jones, who's the owner of the property, and Ms. Tricia Ray, who is Operations Manager for Quadrant Properties and is the manager of this facility. As we stated earlier, Qua Pau Whispering Pines is requesting a change of zoning from C8 to C8 amended in order to lease this space to, for a medical clinic. And the photos that were shown earlier represent the site well. The on this exhibit, we're basically just showing the old final development plan from 1996. And you can see it read the actual track that we're talking about, which is considered to be parcel three on this development plan. And again, in aerial photo, the brown roof is the building, the parking lot. Both front and rear are part of this lot. Currently, this subject property is, was utilized by two tenants. Building's about 7,500 square feet. Half of it is in this Michael's Flooring. The other half was in a mattress store that has been vacant from the sites for about 18 months now. And Walgreens is immediately to the right. The restaurant is immediately to the left. And you're looking north in this photo. In the proposed tenant for this facility is a company called Paragon Healthcare. And they've engaged an architect to work out the tenant space within this space. There are no changes to the actual physical building being proposed, with the exception of an entry door that's going to change there. And signage on the monument sign that you saw in the previous photograph would be updated, as well as there'll be a proposed monument or a proposed building sign on the south face of this building. Those are the only changes that would occur with this new tenant. Parking, we have plenty of parking. We would, if this was to be, and if this is to be approved for Paragon Healthcare, we would have in excess of 11 spaces under your current parking codes. And there's parking in the rear, as well as this parking in the front, as well as a shared parking agreement and shared access agreement with these, all these facilities that are present on the site. That's the extent of our presentation. The rezoning is necessary because of the use, which is a medical clinic. No further site changes are contemplated with this rezoning. And we're here for answering any questions that may, that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Just go ahead.
Wayne, this is Bill. What are the typical hours for this planning?
Sir, I'm not familiar with what those might be, but they would typically be business hours that they would be operating. I don't know how, no different than a retail operation as far as hours. We can find.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? This is Tricia.
Yes, go ahead.
The possible tenant has told us the hours would be eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Thank you.
Is this a walk-in type clinic? Walk off the street or you have to have appointments?
Appointments would be made by the clients.
And exactly what kind of medical office is this? I saw something about infusion, but I wasn't.
Yes. This particular tenant has infusion clinics. They have multiple sites throughout Texas, Tennessee, and Georgia. Basically, they provide infusions for people that have some, have different medical conditions, such as cancer treatments or treatments for hemophilia and other sorts of medical needs that they might, they might have. But they're very modern appearing, well-done tenant finishes. And there would be appointments made for these uses.
What kind of accommodations do you have for hazmat?
Excuse me, I can't, I couldn't tell you. These folks have been in this business for quite a while. They will have to abide by any of the regulations related to hazmat materials as far as handling them, disposing them, that sort of thing.
Anyone else have any questions? Seeing no one, let's see if anyone, we have any comments from any attendees. Mel, you want to take it from here?
Sure, so if you would like to ask a question, question or make a comment regarding this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the attendee list. It might also be in the bottom right-hand corner of your WebEx application. At this time, I don't see anyone.
Okay. Then we do not need rebuttal on this. So Commissioners, you got any other questions? Seeing none, this will conclude this, this hearing and we'll go on to the next one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item is 15-22 John D. Johnson requests for amended C8.
Good evening. PC 15-22 John D. Johnson is a request for an amended C8 for a 0.92 acre tract of land on the west side of Lima Ferry Road, approximately 415 feet north of South Crest Way. As you can see on the county context map, this site is in South County. And there you can see it outlined in red on the aerial. On the land use map, you can see that most of Lima Ferry Road surrounding the subject site is developed with retail, commercial development, including fencing company and a plant nursery that surround the site. On either side of Lima Ferry Road, off the frontage, are residential development, primarily in the R3 Residence District. And additionally, south of the site down Lima Ferry Road is one of the sites for St. Louis Community College. On this aerial, you can see some of the surrounding commercial and residential development. This is looking west into the site. Lima Ferry is at my back, where you can see the public hearing sign. Looking north up Lima Ferry. Looking east directly across Lima Ferry Road. Looking south down Lima Ferry Road. Looking west into the site at the existing C store. This is looking west into the site at the existing car wash building. This is looking west along the property line, where you can see the nursery next door. This is looking north at kind of the rear corner of the parcel. Looking north again at the existing car wash building. Looking southwest, this is at the rear of the property. Looking south at the existing convenience store building. This is looking east at the back of the existing convenience store. Looking south towards the property line and the Easter Fence Company next door. Looking southwest at the existing trash enclosure on the site. Looking east at the rear of the site toward Lima Ferry Road. And this is again looking east towards Lima Ferry Road. The existing convenience store building is at my back. And looking west at the existing convenience store building. And at this time, the petitioner has a presentation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Rush, and I'm with Site Development Engineering. And I believe I have some photos to show.
Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
How do I pull that up? The one on the site plan up?
Oh, I'll put the site plan up. Can you see the presentation, Steve?
There you go, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. The site plan is on the, is on the left. The building is in the center here. And what's pointed out briefly to describe the surrounding areas, we have Haley Nursery to the north and Easter Fence in the south and west. And then across Lima Ferry Road, we have the St. Louis area map, which is the Wannenberg Street Guide. And we have Sessions. And then across the street in angle, we have Kelly's Mark Tire and Auto Center. Basically, pretty simple. The client bought the property to convert it to auto repair. The existing C store will be converted into three service bays. The two service bays on the, on the right-hand side or north side would be for auto repair work. And the third bay would be for inside sales. The car wash will be converted into two service bays that would provide the vehicle maintenance repairs and body repair work mentioned on the application. The Mel, if you could bring up the yeah. This shows the the front of the building with the service, with the overhead doors, replacing the part of the right side of the building where there, there are no doors right now. And this is what it'll look like with the new service doors. The site was left in pretty, pretty bad repair, misrepair. There's a number of pavement sections that need to be, you know, fixed. There's a lot, there's a rather large gravel area, I believe, where the gas tanks were. So that'll have to be, you know, resurfaced. So there'll be some required resurfacing down on the site. Department of Planning has requested that we reduce the entrances to 40 feet. And we agreed to do that. Basically, that's the presentation. Park, we have, we have enough parking. The server, the hours of operation would be Monday through Friday. It's possibly a seven to six, seven to seven. Certainly no later than that. So if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, Steve, thank you. Questions, anyone?
I have a couple lanes, Bill.
Go ahead.
Mentioned those where the gas tanks, are they removed?
Yes, he has all the, all the documentation that he needs for all that remediation that took place.
Okay. How many cars do you plan on servicing or having on the property?
I didn't quite hear that.
How many cars or vehicles is he planning to have on the surface? How many is allowed and how many would you have?
Do you mean for sale?
Either are for sale or repair.
Well, there's only going to be one service bay for sale. There's going to be one car in there for inside sales. And I don't know how to answer how many cars will be out there for repair.
Okay, so so you have inside sale, that's the only sale that's going to be going on? No outside cars to be sold? Okay. Yeah, how about signage?
Man, again, please.
Signage, signs.
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, I haven't thought of that. I'm sure he'll want a sign. I don't know if it'll be on the building or if it would be a freestanding sign. That hasn't really been discussed.
You're requiring additional lighting?
No, the other building that he did before, all the lighting was on the building. There is a number of abandoned light standards on the site. And we have no plans at all to use of, to reuse them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Bill State. Go ahead, Keith.
Is this going to be fenced in and secured for the cars that are sitting there in the evening and over the weekends?
I don't know the answer to that. Let me see if I can get that answer for you. He says, getting back to the sign, there'll be signs on the building and one freestanding sign, and there will be no fencing.
Thank you.
This is, this is Bill State. Following up on Keith and, and the other bill, how, I think the question that I have for the number of cars is how many cars will be left on the lot overnight?
Well, the, I just got a text that there will be no more than 20 and 25 cars on the site.
Now, are these, are these cars that are waiting to be repaired? Are they cars for sale or are they?
No, 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 no outside sales.
Okay.
And then
So they're cars ready to be repaired?
Yes. And, or be, are being picked up, you know, after they're repaired.
Sure. And you said you had a body shop in the old car wash?
That, that, that'll be two, two service bays.
For, for what purpose? For just service or for body work?
There'll be, all four of those bays will be, offer the same service. I don't know they'll have one bay specifically for one of the, you know, for either maintenance or repairs or body repair. I don't know that.
Okay, but, but the intent, but the intent is to use this facility to do body work, is that correct? Body work, including painting and that?
Now, here's, the body work would be paintless dent removal, window tanning, vehicle wraps, in that, that time of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
So basically, these cars are salvage cars or?
Say it again, please.
Are they salvage cars?
Hey, Stephen, is he operating someplace else right now?
Say it again, Wayne.
Is he operating at another location?
Yes, he's out of town. And I'm getting emails back and he just said no salvage.
He's not operating in St. Louis right now?
No, no, he's not, no, he's not in town. He's out of town. No, 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 he's just not, he's just not here. But his, he does operate in town. He lives in, you know, he lives there, so that's what you mean.
Is he going to keep the other location open?
He, the one, two that I know, Wayne, is one's on Evergreen and then the other one's on Lima Ferry Road. I don't, I think he wants to move where he is right now to this site on Lima Ferry.
Where's he on Lima Ferry?
It is.
I believe he's at the corner of Lima Ferry and Lindberg, which is the, the site that QuickTrip has, has acquired for that new store. Is that right, Steve?
No, he, he saw that, he's no longer there. He's working at, he's temporary service. I think he owns a, another store north about probably towards the Millville High School. store north about probably towards the Millville High School.
We did the ground across from Bader or Babe, oh, the roofing people?
Um, yeah, he he owned that, but he's not operating out there. But he owned that way. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, if there's not gonna be any fencing, there's gonna be twenty to twenty-five vehicles parked. I assume that most of them, I mean, it's not gonna turn into some kind of a junkyard, is it?
No, no salvage.
Well, but I mean, when when you mention all the repairs, say someone's needs a right front quarter panel repaired. And it's crunched up. Does that car stay parked there till the part comes in? And then what happens to the parts you take off the car?
I would say that if he has to wait for a part, that's a part the car would probably stay there.
Okay, and what about the damaged parts that are removed? Is there gonna be any type of enclosure to?
I I have to be honest. I I know Dave's place and I don't know that I've ever recalled a wrecked car sitting in front of any of its establishment. No, I don't think the salary thing. You know, is remain here.
The only reason I ask that is because it says repairs such as, which leads me to believe that's not a complete list. That's just a few examples. That they do water pump replacement, brake jobs and so forth.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I'm I don't know how to answer that because I don't know that. It it's not a day to day thing. That's for sure.
Okay, will they sell tires?
Yes.
And do they have a spot to store the old tires?
Um, I would say I don't know the answer to that. I don't know how how we take care of that. I would assume he would have somewhere in the back to store. Out of sight, there isn't place behind the building, a grass area and behind the building.
There's no fencing around there, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I just got an email saying that there will be no wrecked car for more than five to seven days at the site.
So how would he limit the number of cars that have quarter panel damage to them?
I would say that just the the ability to service cars is going to be the the limiting factor.
Well, it seemed like I keep getting back to the fence. It would seem like that a fence would be appropriate. If you're gonna have a wrecked car there for five to seven days. He'd want something to keep heck kids or anybody from going in. Plus the eyes, the eyesore that it would create.
Yeah. Well, we can certainly discuss that. There's no no item about that.
That's all I had. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Val, you wanna see if anyone would like to speak?
Sure. So if you would like to speak or ask a question about this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. It might also be in the bottom right hand corner of the WebEx application. We don't have very many attendees and I don't see any hands up at this time.
Okay. We don't need rebuttal. Steve, you got anything to add?
Yeah, I just got a text to say that the commission feels we need to fence that area. We will. We will accommodate that.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody? Seeing none, that concludes this hearing. Steve, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And with that, we'll go on to the last item, which is PC sixteen dash twenty-two. Kimberly George requests for CUP and R two.
We'll just wait for the PowerPoint to come back up. Uh, yeah, so this is PC sixteen dash twenty-two Kim George, uh, which is a request for a CUP in the R two for a zero point seven four acre tract of land located on the north side of Parker Road, approximately one hundred and fifty feet west of Bell Fountain Road. As you can see from the county context map, this parcel is in North County. And you can see in the the aerial, the site is outlined in red. Um, I will note just south of the site, um, on the south side of Parker Road is Bell Park Plaza, which is the geography of the Spanish Lake Town Center Master Plan. Excuse me, and you can see from the the land use map, uh, the surrounding development, uh, the retail of Bell Park Plaza to the south. And there's additionally some more retail along Bell Fountain Road. And then it's primarily single family developments along Parker and and east behind the the retail fronting Bell Fountain. And this aerial is a little bit closer. You could see both parcels that constitute the the subject site. So this view would be looking north from Parker Road. You can see the public hearing sign. And then this view would be turning around and looking south across Parker Road. And that is a tattoo shop. Just beyond that is Bell Park Plaza. And then this you would be looking east at the adjoining single family development. And then you can see the intersection of Parker and Bell Fountain. And then this you would be looking west along Parker Road. And then this you is looking northeast. And then this you would be looking north between the the two buildings. And then this he is looking north along the the western property line. And then this he is looking northwest at some of the adjoining property. And then this view will be just turning around, looking east into the subject site. And this is looking south back towards the existing building. And this is northeast from the subject site. Uh, you can see the Dollar General development located there off Bell Fountain Road. And then this would be looking east at the adjoining single family parcel. And then this view is from the roughly the same position, turn around, looking south. You can see the existing parking onsite. And then this you is is another view of that parking area looking west from the eastern property line. And the petitioner has a presentation at this time.
Paul, real quick, would you, is this is this already in use as a childcare center?
So so the petitioner, if I can, Paul, she has a home daycare license and that limits her to caring for ten children. When you go over ten children, it becomes a childcare center. And that's why she needs a conditional use permit.
All right.
And then Kim, do you have a PowerPoint? Otherwise, I can bring up the site plan.
I do not. I've been trying to reach the
I saw you were asking, Brian. I I will. I will bring up the site plan.
Thank you.
Okay, can everyone see this?
Yes.
All right, Kim, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, commissioning, planning commissioning. I am basically trying to convert my home of ten children to go up to twenty children. We have both properties. We live in sixteen eleven after we renovated it. And we wanted to go ahead and offer services to more kids. Our daycare is from six weeks to five years old. We have the space. We're not really trying to go over more than twenty kids. But we have the capacity. I really don't know what else to say. I've kind of been working on this since two thousand sixteen with the envision of being able to offer the community more more daycare capacity for smaller kids, which is what the need is in my immediate area. There are two daycares that are on eith- on either side of me. And they're usually full. So the kids that I offered services to. They're usually, they're not in our area and they have to go a little bit further out. You see in the site plans, we do have the parking. Really on both sides, even though I know we can only use one side for parking. But we're willing to accommodate whatever changes we need. Uh, St. Louis Count, well, not St. Louis County, but State of Missouri Childcare rep did come out to my facility today. They've looked at my facility before. Uh, the fire department has as well, has looked at the architectural drawings that we have. And the rep for Saint for State of Missouri Childcare is on board, always have been of me going up to twenty children. I don't know what else to say. This
Ms. George, if I may, can can you describe a little bit about, because there are two existing houses? Can you describe a little bit of what how the two how the two homes will be used in conjunction or just sort of do sort of walk through that a little bit?
Okay, so basically sixteen fifteen is the daycare. Um, sixteen eleven is where we moved after we renovated the property. Originally sixteen fifteen was going to be the daycare. Uh, but but it just took too long and we purchased the property next door, which is sixteen fifteen. That's the reason why there's already asphalt there. Uh, when we first bought the property, there was it was a jungle in the back and the front for about six years. And so when we decided that this is what we were gonna do with this property. Um, it was easier for us to go ahead and have it excavated and have someone come in and lay some blacktop instead of having tree limbs coming up everywhere. Um, but sixteen eleven is where we where we reside. And sixteen fifteen is strictly is strictly daycare on the first floor. Uh, we don't use the basement for daycare and we don't use the second floor for daycare. Everything is on the first floor.
So sixteen fifteen will have all of the twenty children and sixteen eleven is your residence?
Residence, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, you got any questions?
Yes, I do. I have a question. Um, I'm curious to know which building is closest to the corner of Parker Road and Bell Fountain?
Sixteen fifteen sixteen eleven is. That's our residence.
So the building closest to the Dollar General is where your daycare is?
Well, both homes are closer to the Dollar General, but being closer to Bell Fountain would be sixteen eleven. That would be us. It's just we have all that land that goes back to that fence.
Okay.
Dollar General's on the other side.
Okay, so if if do you plan on making your daycare bigger to hold twenty children?
Well, we have the space now to hold up to twenty-two kids based on the fire, uh, the fire inspection. And that's having four infants. That's including four infants. So we do have the capacity. It's a it's about twenty-three hundred square foot in that property.
All on the first floor?
Yes, we have a kitchen. Uh, there's gonna be three bathrooms. It's gonna be installed there. And based on our architectural drawing, it shows it holds twenty kids. Because you're looking at a point thirty-five square feet for kids over two and point forty-five for infants, for infants up to twelve months old. And that allows me to have four infants.
Okay, how many employees do you plan to have there?
Four.
And you have about four parking spaces?
Yes. On you should have the site plans there that shows we're using. We were able to use the, uh, we have a two car garage, so we were able to use one of the car the carport for the garage. We have two spaces on the other side of the fencing. And then we have another spot if we decide to have a van. And then I also, by me living next door, I park over there next door.
So when when parents bring their children, how do they, which way do they enter?
They will enter in off of the street. We have we have gravel and then we also, well, the blacktop is gonna be throughout uh, all the parking area for the daycare. So they'll be they can pull up on the side of the house, which there's barriers there.
Okay, so it wouldn't be any parking on the street. Cause you already know Bell Fountain is a two lane street, basically, and very busy.
Oh, yeah, it's busy. I've been here since two thousand sixteen. It's definitely busy. Uh, but we haven't had any accidents at the daycare since we've been here. We kind of instruct traffic with our parents. But most of the kids that I have here, or at least, uh, there's at least two or three in their family that goes to my daycare. And it seems like they keep having kids. So when one goes off to kindergarten, I end up getting that new one. So it's kind of like a family thing. And that's the reason why I want to expand to be able to offer the same services that I did to their brother and sisters.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Will. Anyone else?
I have a question. Do you have any type of a nurse's office or medical place?
No, never never had to get any of that as of now or I mean, but if it's something that I need to have. We do all have CPR. We all have CPR training.
Like if a kid fell and hurt themselves or?
Oh, yeah, we all have CPR training, every everyone that works for me. We have to get it every two years.
Wayne, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
What are your hours of operation? I'm curious.
We are actually open twenty-four hours. Um, and I I did that because when COVID hit mo- a lot of my, uh, a lot of my clients are police officers, uh, for actually for Berkeley. Uh, and they come. And so with their hours changing so much, I was able to offer them that service uh, when a lot of daycares were closed. Right now, we don't have anyone after six o'clock. So we're right now, we're at a seven to six o'clock range.
But you do plan on having twenty-four hour service there, right?
I plan on offering that service. Um, however, if I don't have the staffing, then I won't I won't stress that service. But I do have parents that sometimes work a little bit later. And that's one of the reasons why I kept it at that twenty-four hours. So in case someone uh, didn't get off until seven or eight, that I could still accommodate them and still be within compliance.
Okay, and and follow up to
I often wondered what people that work second and third shift, single parents, what they do for childcare.
Oh, yeah, it's it's sad because there's not a lot of daycares that are open past six o'clock and even now with COVID. Uh, but like I said, I have a lot of police officers um, and still on the waiting list for new kids that are, uh, police officer parents, both parents. So that's it's it's a need.
I think I heard you say you was gonna prepare meals or you prepare meals for the children?
Oh, yes, sir. We give them meals if they're there from eight to six, they get at least three meals. If they're there after six, they also get dinner and a snack.
Okay, in the sixteen fifteen property that you moved out of, did you have to do any preparations to? Okay. In the sixteen fifteen property that, uh, you moved out of, did you have to do any, uh, preparations to make the building more comfortable?
Oh yes, sir. When, when we first got licensed, we did everything St. Louis County asked us to do. We even got a, a light, uh, installed in. It's a pole light from Ameren UE. Uh, they specifically came in where it's, it's lit all around the daycare. We have cameras around both houses all the way around with sensors. So if anyone comes on, uh, the property, uh, we get a notification. I walk around with an earpiece in my ear just so I don't miss anything.
Did you have to do any reball into the house itself inside so that the kids?
We did do some updates. Uh, the previous people that owned it, um, who pretty much lived in it. Um, so we did have to come in and, and redo plumbing, redo the kitchen, um, redo the floors, uh, update the electric. Um, and so with this, with this time around, um, the only thing we're gonna be doing is, is installing, uh, more bathrooms because there's the space for it. Uh, we don't need all the closet space that we, that we have on that first floor. So there's space for those additional bathrooms so that it would accommodate all the kids.
So the house would be easily trans-, uh, transitioned back to a livable house?
Yes.
Sold it?
Oh, yes.
How about, uh, Mr. Cunningham mentioned dropping off? So how would the people, when they drop it off, do they make a circle or how do they get out of your place?
Usually they pull in, they pull around the back, uh, and they pull back up. Right now, we have parking on the front of our house. Um, and I don't know if, if St. Louis County is gonna make us change that or not. If we do, I mean, we do, um, and we'll just have to make additional space. But now they've been parking in the front and it makes it a little bit easier for them to come in and pull back out. Uh, right now, since COVID, we haven't, the last two years, we haven't had parents come into the facility. So we actually have been coming out to get the kids and bringing the kids in and taking the kids back out to the parents. So they're able to pull in, pull out, or they pull around and they pull to the side of the house, especially when there's bad weather.
Have you had any experience with snow out there and then they drop the kids off?
Oh yeah. We have a snow, we have a snow company, yes, sir.
Oh, you had somebody move the snow from your property?
Yes, that puts out, put out the ice. My husband has a crew as, as well as friends of ours that have a, a new snow company and landscaping business. They've been coming out and, and accommodating us for that. So when a lot of places were closed, we were able to be open because I, I know my parents, they can't just take off just because. I mean, the weather was bad, but that's still a just because.
Okay, signage? You don't, uh, are you planning on having signage, advertising?
Well, we, I have a small sign. Uh, it's basically looks like a street sign. I don't think I'm gonna do anything bigger than that because I don't really wanna take away. We still have a house at sixteen fif-, sixteen eleven. So I don't really wanna take away from that homey environment, which is why I, you know, decided to keep it at sixteen fifteen and not get a commercial space. So it's just like a regular little stop sign, like sign, so that they'll know this is us. And then we have decorations out, so you can't miss us.
Yeah, I've seen it, but I just, just wondered.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Mel, you wanna see if anybody would like to speak?
Yeah, we have only one attendee. Um, if you've joined the meeting using your phone for audio and you would like to speak, I've unmuted you. If you've called in.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I do have a question for Ms. Kimberly.
Oh, could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Bonita Isabel.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
My, my question is, do you, what curriculum do you have for the children? What is your curriculum?
What curriculum that we have?
Yes.
We basically, our curriculum is based on what the state offers. We have a program that we use. Uh, and then most of it is, is free for them. My daughter teaches the preschool kids. Uh, and they have gone from, uh, not knowing their alphabets, uh, and this is two and a half to now four-year-old kids, to speaking Spanish. Um, and this is all within the last eight months. So we try to follow the guideline of the state, but we kind of grab things from other, uh, curriculum programs that better suit our kids. We have two kids that, that started with me back in two thousand sixteen. And when they left my facility, uh, they are ready for kindergarten, even though they can only start preschool.
Okay. And your employees, what skills and qualifications do they have?
Well, my daughter, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. My daughter just graduated.
Skills and qualifications.
Okay, well, I am in school now for my masters in child development. I have a bachelor's in business. Uh, my daughter has a, uh, degree from Lincoln, newly received her degree in, uh, English and journalism. And I have two other employees that basically have been in the childcare industry for the last ten years.
Yeah, but what skills and qualifications do the, do, do those other two employees have that have been there for ten years?
Well, that would be it. The fact that they've been experiencing the childcare business for the last ten years. One, one of my teachers that have been, uh, in the business for the last ten years, she works with the, uh, with the infants, uh, which is basically from six weeks to, uh, two years old. Uh, the other young lady works from, with the two-year-olds to three-year-olds and she's also been in the business for at least ten years. Uh, we have to be certified, we take certified classes, at least twelve credit hours every year. And we also continue, um, training through the classes that the state offers.
Okay. You, you know, the reason I've asked, I've been in the childcare field for years myself. I am a in-home childcare provider at, at this time. And I have, you know, went into many daycares and I've seen people who have hired, let's say teenagers off the street, uh, people with no skills, uh, the children are getting, uh, not the quality of care that they deserve. And I've seen some horrible, uh, situations in daycare surroundings. So I'm just really concerned with, with the daycares. I have grandchildren myself. I have grandchildren myself. And my daughter is looking for a daycare, even though I am a childcare provider. I, uh, I am not able to provide the daytime service that she needs. Because I'm only, I'm only one person. And often I have been into these ta-, daycares where I am almost against daycares because of the poor quality of service. So I am looking for one that is offering the, the curriculum, the qualifications. Like you said, the, uh, CPR, the training. I'm looking for a skilled, qualified daycare and I haven't been able to find them in the community.
Well, our daycare does have it. I just recently, uh, received my, uh, CDA, which is Child Care Development, uh, certificate to be able to, uh, teach kids and, and have them graduate from my daycare. I just recently received that in the midst of all these other degrees I'm getting, uh, just about two months ago. Um, so we've had our in, our in-home inspection with the, uh, with the counseling. Um, so we do take pride in our, in educating our kids and making sure, uh, that they come out better than they did when they came in. And that, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I just wanna go back to the other two employees that have been in the business for years. But they, what kind of background training do those two have besides just being there?
Well, same thing, because I meet with my, we, we have a curriculum, they write it down, what they do. They don't just teach it, they actually plan it. We plan it. Uh, so they're not just teaching whatever they think of that day. Uh, we do a calendar for the whole year that I give to the parents with all of our off days and any important information, just because I'm not the daycare to close, just because I don't feel like opening. You will know ahead of time, a year ahead of time, when we're open and when we're closed for holidays. Uh, so I, I take pride in my business because I've, I've owned several businesses and I've always taken care of, uh, my clients first. So I'm a customer. Yes.
Okay, I don't see any other speakers.
Okay. I don't, you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I just, I just wanna say, we just wanna be a service to the community and, and I believe that we have been. We've had, we've taken in a lot of kids who were in environments just like this, this young lady mentioned. Uh, and so we take pride in, um, our kids when they come to our facility and when they leave out so that the parents do know that they're well taken care of and they're in a better, uh, a better location. And, and it shows.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, commissioners, any questions before we let her go? Seeing none, uh, that concludes this hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And that's the last item. Uh, we've already touched on good of the order. Any, anybody have anything to add?
I don't believe so. Jacob?
Nope.
Nope, okay. With that, we, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
Second?
A second.
Question? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? I seven, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.